Good morning. It is eight thirty-one, and I am going to call the council meeting of March eleventh to order. There is an agenda that's been circulated. Are there any additions to that agenda? Counselor Christie?
A quick community report on community futures.
Okay, nine point two, community futures. Counselor Cunningham?
So, council committee reports, I will add for Division Five Police Advisory Committee and Mountain View Neighbors Women's event, please.
So, nine point three, police advisory. And nine point four. Women's in business. Any other additions? I have a short one on Troschu Housing, so that'll be nine point five. Any others? Counselor Phobes, sure.
I just noticed that in our package, the January minutes from housing were not included. Do you need a copy of those? I did email them to everyone, so.
Okay, sure. Ms. Vanderkuh?
The minutes are actually in the e-scribe. They're just not in the PDF copy.
Okay.
They will be in the post-minute, post-agenda.
Okay. Yeah, here, Neale Housing is nine point one, so, okay. All right, are there any other additions? If not, Counselor Christie?
I'll move the agenda as amended.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. So, the regular council meeting minutes from February twenty-fifth were pre-circulated. Are there any corrections or errors? What's the wish here? Deputy Reeve McGee?
I'd like to move the adoption of the minutes from February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, of the regular meeting of council as presented.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept the minutes from the February twenty-fifth regular council meeting as presented. All those in favor? And that is also carried unanimously. Thank you. So, first item in our agenda would be four point one, EPR hazardous and special products. And welcome, Mr. McKernan. And I'm going to say anytime you are ready.
All right. Good morning, Reeve, members of council. This morning, I bring to you a request for decision in regards to the EPR. This is the hazardous and special products section of the EPR, so HSP. A few years ago, the Alberta government brought in a program to put the onus of some recycling back on to the producers of those products. And such products also are the hazardous and special products, HSP. So, these are your consumer-sized products that you use in your home, such as like oven cleaner, WD forty, that sort of thing. So, this is separate from the paper, plastics, and tin. So, as I mentioned before, this was something that was brought in by the Alberta government. This system is only for household-type items. It does not include any commercial things. As part of the EPR program that we registered for a while back, the the community does have to enter an agreement with one of the with one of the PROs, so the producer responsibility organizations. And this for HSP is called Product Care. Currently, Neale County, we offer a once-a-year event for our household hazardous waste. This event, although it takes things that are outside of this program, it also takes the HSP. So, that's our only avenue for collecting this material, as our transfer sites don't take it on a regular basis. Although our residents can go down to the Drumheller landfill and use their sites for continual acceptance of these. So, this this contract that we're looking to enter into with Product Care is only addressing our one-time event that we hold that we hold at our county shop. Since, like I said, that this event, we co-mingle the loads, we don't just accept them separately, they HSP, HHW. They're all co-mingled into one barrel container-type thing through our contractor and then taken away, transported to where it needs to be done, and recycled from that event. So, we just host it, basically provide the avenue, and that sort of thing. So, in the in the contract, you'll notice that the reimbursement that's going to that's being offered through Product Care is twenty-four dollars per per barrel that's collected at this event. There was a there was a what word am I looking for? There was a little kind of a between the producers and the PROs and the recyclers. They held a little event to kind of look at what percentage of HSP is coming in compared to HHW when it's co-mingled. So, they did this, and they found that basically it's around twenty-two percent of a barrel is HSP. So, that's where they came up with their per barrel type cost of those of that for it. So, financial staffing implications, there will be some financial recovery from the cost of hosting this annual roundup event. That cost will vary depending on the volumes that are brought into the site. If we have more volumes, then there's more barrels, a little bit more money, there's less than obviously won't be as big. As well, the county, we do provide one employee during that event. That employee usually ensures that the gates open for the contractor to come in, set up, puts out signs for the event, is there for any equipment operation that may be needed, and then to basically close out the site when everything is all done and stuff like that, so. Yeah, so there's just a few options there for you to look over and consider. So, if anyone has any questions, then we can start there.
Counselor Phobes, please.
I just had a I had a phone call last night, just asking who determines the twenty-four dollars for the barrel?
That's through Product Care and ourselves. It's just, you know, they base it off of kind of the what's the common around the area and stuff like that. It's also based off the percentage of a barrel, right? So, the barrel, like I said, is usually about twenty-two percent HSP, but, you know, the eighty-eight or, you know, seventy-eight percent is HHW. So, they come up with the twenty-four dollars.
Counselor Penner?
Morning, John. Would this event be in conjunction with the other municipalities, too? Will we be opening it up to them, or we're all running our own?
Through the reef, so that's kind of a good question. Historically, we always held this with the Town of Three Hills only. It was just usually the Town of Three Hills and Asta Prudon. I don't know if that would be restricted this way. It would just be some accounting afterwards for the to split the cost of the event.
So, are there any other questions, clarification needed? Counselor Phobes, please.
Just because I'm new at this for this particular thing, like I'm just curious, like, what does the force measure mean in this contract? It's not like I've ever dealt with this before in my life, so I just wanted to know what that means when, because the word force is a
Mr. Hogan, do you want to tackle that one? Sure.
The Chair. So, force measure is it's a part of pretty much every contract. And so, what it essentially, it's a legal term. It essentially means that there are backup. So, contracts will generally deal with if A, then B, right? So, if something happens, then this is what happens, or if we provide this service, then this payment gets made, et cetera, right? The exchange. Force measure is the recognition that there are some things that you can't anticipate that are that are happening, and that those will neither party will be on the hook if those types of events happen. So, in in older agreements, you would see that listed as an act of God, right? Those types of big events that you can't reasonably be expected to perform the contract if those events occur. So, of course, I'm simplifying a legal concept, but that's the general gist of it. And so, if there's a major force that happens that is highly disruptive, and it's not reasonable for either party to fulfill their obligations under the contract, then.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, not a problem. Any other questions, clarification, discussion? Counselor Penner, please.
It's a shame that things like this are not cost recovery, and it's very hard to make them cost recovery in a way. But it's a service, in my opinion, that we need to offer to keep these products out of our landfills, out of our ditches, which lead to our waterways and everything else. So, it's unfortunate that they are not cost recovery, and hopefully it will be. I'm hoping it does, but there are times when it is not. So, in saying that, I would make the motion, the council authorized the CAO to enter into a service agreement with Product Care for the collection of hazardous special products as part of the overall EPR program.
Okay, thank you for that. So, we do have a motion that we authorize entering into this agreement with Product Care for the collection of our hazardous special products in conjunction with our overall EPR program. Is there any discussion to that motion? Go ahead, Counselor Phobes, please. No.
No, it's all good. I have figured it out. It's all good. I answered my own question in my head.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for your indulgence.
No, no problem. That's what we're here for. Any other questions or discussion with regard to the motion, any further clarification needed? Okay, go ahead, Counselor Phobes, please.
So, if we're getting paid twenty-four dollars a barrel as a return, what are we subsidizing on the other side of that? I'm just curious.
Okay, so do we have an idea of what the subsidization on this program is, like in terms of cost?
I'd have to check up what our final balance was last year in the GL, but we usually put it in the budget. We usually split it in half with the Town of Three Hills, and I think that we're probably, and I I don't really want to say because I don't have it in front of me, but probably in a couple thousand dollars, four four thousand dollars, I think the whole event costs us, kind of thing. That's the setup, the mobilization, all that included, and then the handling of the hazardous waste. Like I said, it's only twenty-four dollars because we collect, we co-mingle, right? I mean, if we had a site that we only specifically collect these, then we'd probably have a better bit better of a return, but we're co-mingling, so they use a percentage. It's just the kind of standard.
And that just simplifies it for our own residents in terms of
Right.
not having to go necessarily to two different locations or whatever.
Right, and and through the reef, if you look into the the back of that package, it'll it lists what's accepted, and there's quite a little triangle of what's accepted there. So, it gets confusing not only for the residents, but also for our tenants as well, so.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion or questions, clarification? If not, we do have a motion that says council authorizes the CAO to enter into a services agreement with Product Care for the collection of hazardous special products in conjunction with the overall EPR program. If you're ready for the question. Not seeing any no's, so I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. And thank you, Mr. McKernan.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here with us today. The next item in our agenda is Planning five point one point one, Draft nineteen oh five Municipal Development Plan, Third Reading. And welcome, Ms. Hazelton, and anytime you're ready, please.
Good morning, Reeve, members of council. So, we're coming back for third reading for the Bylaw nineteen oh five, the Municipal Development Plan. And again, just a reminder, this is a long-term document that should reflect the values and priorities of the residents within the municipality it serves. A review of this document is an opportunity to review the current reality and identify emerging trends with a twenty-to-thirty-year projected forecast. In February of twenty twenty-three, administration recommended to council that a full review of the current municipal development plan take place. Administration also presented several public engagement options to council. Council did approve the working style where a maximum of three councillors and two members-at-large would meet to discuss the six largest sections of the municipal development plan. Administration would then take the working group information to the public engagement working suppers for additional feedback. This draft is a result of eighteen working group sessions and four separate public engagements held over a period of eleven months. This draft has been circulated for several months, and the changes were presented at the public hearing held on November twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. In order to give council an opportunity for further discussion, administration brought the document back to the February eighteenth Committee of the Hall for any final revisions prior to bringing it back for third reading. Council noted a few minor revisions to the document, including the addition of a couple definitions. They also clarified the area they wanted to designate as an exclusion zone for confined feeding operations. Council instructed administration to incorporate a one-point-six-kilometer, one-mile buffer from the urban corporate limit and Hamlet boundaries into the municipal development plan, both for new confined feeding operations and expansion of existing ones. This change has been reflected under the Agriculture Section Policy Twelve and has also been defined also been defined in the maps attached to the document. Administration is open to any further amendments to the document, and if no further changes are forthcoming, council can move third reading for the adoption of bylaw nineteen-oh-five, the municipal development plan. We did also include the red letter version as well as the clean copy in there, um, so that you would have both in your package.
Okay, thank you for that. Any discussion, uh, clarification or comment, questions? Counselor Phobes, please.
I can't, sorry, um, I'll start with this. I can't remember the exact time we had this discussion, but I had made mention that we would, could something around AOPA be put into this document? And you said, yes, we could, but I didn't see anything, so I'm just wondering if I could see if council would consider including the following statement in accordance with the, um, Agricultural Operation Practices Act, and then continue with the no new, expanded confined feeding operations. The reason why I'm asking for this of council is, is that it is a commitment to thoughtful planning and consideration for our urban neighbors aligning with the ICFs and the IDPs. Additionally, I, this will help encourage, um, the live-work opportunities that do not negatively impact adjacent users in the line with our residential portion of the MDP. I'm just wondering if we could have the AOPA mentioned in this document.
Go ahead, uh, Counselor Whitstock, please.
Just a clarification, so if you want AOPA in there, do you want to eliminate the one-mile buffer from the corporate boundaries?
I just know that there's a hierarchy of how things are done, and that the AOPA and the IDP circum- they circumvent the MDP. So I just would like to have some mention in there that AOPA is, because the NRCB looks at our documents, but we have conversations all the time around the fact that AOPA is basically the, um, determining factor on what gets put through and what doesn't, so why is there no mention of AOPA in our documents, then?
Okay, um, Ms... Oh, Mr. Hogan, go ahead, please.
The, uh, I think through you, Mr. Chair, is, um, I'll defer part of that question to Ms. Hazelton, if there's anything that, that she feels to add. Um, but we can, we can note that change, what might be beneficial is, is for, um, as council to go through the remainder of the document, if there's any other changes, but prior to reading, if we have, even if it's a small break, we can assess what that, what that wording might do, or what the impact of that, adding that statement might be.
Okay. All right, so, um, we'll put that one... So again, um, from, for, just to help me out, if you wouldn't mind, Counselor Phobes, would you, um, read back the wording that you're suggesting? And I'm assuming it relates to point twelve under agricultural policy?
Yeah.
So could you just, um, help me and clarify that wording again?
Sure, um, and it doesn't have to be exact, but in accordance with the Agricultural Operation Practice Act, I would like to see that go in before the no new. I'm okay with the one-point-six and the one-mile from everything, I just would like to have some mention that AOPA is basically, in our document, we agree with what AOPA is saying.
Uh, Counselor Whitstock, sure.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out here, because there is the opportunity for ILOs to be closer than the one-mile exclusion area, not for a feedlot or a hog operation, but possibly for feathers. But if we already have an exclusion of one mile from corporate boundaries, who would take precedence here? AOPA or the exclusion? I'm under the assumption that our one-mile would be the boundary, so AOPA would not be able to... AOPA rules would allow feathers possibly within that one mile, depending on the size of the operation, but if we've already excluded that one mile, I don't know what AOPA would be... What, what they would be actually used for, then, in this whole...
So, um, can you maybe help clarify first, and then I'll come to you, Counselor Phobes? So, if you would, please, Ms. Hazelton?
Sure, in accordance with A- AOPA is going to be a little bit problematic, because I think when the NRCB looks at the document, they're going to say, there's an exclusion zone, but then they've said in accordance with AOPA, and I agree, that the potential is opening the door for something to be cited closer to, than that one mile. AOPA's legislation, and it stands no matter whether we incorporate it into the municipal development plan or not, just like any other piece, the Water Act, we don't incorporate all those pieces in here because they are standalone legislation that everybody's obligated to align with. Um, so this is just the opportunity that they've given municipalities to say, you can create that exclusion zone, so I would, I would, if we were going to put something in there, I would want to make sure that it's, we do it in a way that we're not confusing an approval officer, um, and so that they know clearly that we have this exclusion zone, outside of that exclusion zone, AOPA would be the, the dictating piece of legislation, but it is anyway. So, um, that's, that's the only comment I would have, is I think this in accordance with would be confusing.
Okay, so I'll come to you now, Counselor Phobes.
And I didn't know the exact wording, so that's why I brought it forward. Someone, please, give me the proper wording, but the last time we had a discussion around this, if it isn't in the document, then the NRCB will not even look at it, even if there is a hierarchy, it's what's in this document that they're looking at. So if we make no mention to AOPA, then they're not going to take AOPA, and they're going to go by what we have here.
So just before you come back to that, can I just, so outside of our exclusion zones, within Neill County, AOPA rules apply to every application that's made.
Correct.
So the only thing that this is saying, that within one-point-six kilometers of now our hamlets and any, um, municipality within our boundaries, that we supersede AOPA rules by saying there will be none.
Correct.
Correct, in my interpretation? So, uh, and I'm just trying to clarify, so in this point twelve, what we're saying is, within a mile of our hamlets, within a mile of any municipality within our boundaries, there will be none.
Correct.
And then the legislation that the Alberta Operations Practice Act, AOPA, um, it applies on every other application, because it sets minimum distances to houses or other...
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I guess I'm looking for clarification now from you, Counselor Phobes, in terms of, um, how we would want to include that here. So do we need just a separate statement, say, in all other cases, AOPA rules apply, but that's already, that's already in effect? So I'm just wondering, I'm looking for clarification.
I guess when I sit here and I look at this, we've taken out the IDP portion of, of this, correct? But there's no mention of it in this one anymore. And so is that not what got us having issues with the boundaries from before? So if we're taking that out, I'm just looking to see, where can we have some wording around that we, we will also adhere to what we would like, but also what AOPA does? And I know that there's a hierarchy, but I also know by taking stuff out of this document, no one's going to look at it. They're looking specifically what we have in this document for us. And that's where the one issue came up from before, when the confined feeding operation tried to get an expansion.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, Deputy McGee, and then I'll come to you, Counselor Penner.
So, uh, this is probably through you to, uh, Mike, uh, Mr. Hogan, sorry. Do we not have all kinds of varying types of legislation and other powers at B in anything that we do? And when we make our documents, that is understood and not necessarily needing to be in our documents? So we could say in accordance to the Municipal Government Act as well, but we don't, um, is, how would this might be different or the same? Do you know what I'm asking?
Uh, through the chair, I believe so, Deputy McGee, and I think where to go back to is to, to build on what Ms. Hazelton has said, um, here. AOPA always applies. Um, so anytime an application falling within that jurisdiction comes forward, AOPA is, applies, and will be applied by the NRCB. And so anybody that puts forward this is going to be subject to that, that regulation, that legislation that is, that quasi-judicial provincial board is looking after. What we're saying in here is, despite AOPA, we're saying that within one mile of an urban boundary or a hamlet, we're saying, no, um, that's our buffer zone. So if we didn't have a buffer zone, then AOPA would still apply in those applications, and then individuals could actually likely develop closer to hamlets and, and urban areas, as long as they're meeting those, those, that legislation. So whether we list it here or not, it's always going to apply. We're just saying that if, within these buffer zones, we don't, we don't care if AOPA says you can do it, we're saying we don't think you should. Or we would like to not allow it in those areas.
Counselor Penner, you had a question or a clarification?
That was my clarification, I was just going to ask that question. Like, to be a good neighbor here, we, I want this in, this one-mile thing, not to, to refer back to AOPA rules, because yes, they can be, it could be feathers, could be anything else, could be within that mile. So this is saying that none of them, in our opinion, are to be within that mile of that boundary. Yeah.
Ms. Hazelton.
Through the chair, maybe I can clarify a little bit more, too. Like, you had, when we had these conversations, there were basically three options on the table that you had discussed as a council. One was measuring from that intermunicipal development plan boundary, one was the mile from the urban, or one was using AOPA strictly as the measuring stick. Um, of those three options, you chose that mile, and under the Municipal Government Act, I know there is a hierarchy, and the intermunicipal development plans do take precedent over the municipal development plan typically. However, on this particular piece of information, or this partic- particular subject, the Municipal Government Act and AOPA both say that the MDP, because that is the jurisdictional high-level planning document for a specific jurisdiction. So every municipal development plan has the opportunity to put in some type of exclusion area, and so that's kind of where you landed, which is why we did not incorporate the AOPA piece, is because that was the measurement tool that was off the table, um, within this area, within this buffer zone, so.
Thank you for that. I think one of the things that's maybe partially troubling in this circumstance is, in this case, I think NRCB pays pretty close attention to our municipal development plan. Some other provincial authorities, less so, like AUC, for instance, which has the right to overrule or supersede what our municipal development plan, whereas in the case of NRCB and the way they evaluate these applications for confined feeding operations, they use AOPA rules unless our MDP specifies something that's greater than the AOPA rule. Am I correct?
Correct, yes. And they have to deny it if it does not align with a municipal development plan.
Okay, so in all cases, when an application, like the ones we're talking about right now, would come into the NRCB, they are going to look at our MDP, they are going to evaluate the regulation in our MDP, and if it doesn't state anything specific, then they're going to go to AOPA. And the only way that they would not use AOPA rules would be as if our MDP says something that is greater than what an AOPA rule might specify. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. That helps me a little bit. Um, again, Counselor Phobes, I'm, I'm not sure that we're helping you yet, and so... Okay, I, I'm going to suggest that maybe we, we do recess, just to have a look at if we might want to consider that, and then, um, um, so I'm going to suggest we take a ten-minute recess, just to, so let's, I'll make it thirteen to make it even on the clock, so nine... recess, just to, so let's, I'll make it 13 to make it even on the clock, so nine. Okay, it's now 9:18, and I'm going to call the meeting back to order. And Mr. Hogan, if you would please, do you have comment? We had recess so that we could allow administration to look at this Section 12 under agriculture. Can you please provide some comment from administration?
Through, Mr. Chair, over the course of the break, administration generated some wording for council's consideration that we think reflect the discussion that was taking place prior to the recess. So we have an, under agricultural policy, Section 12, the wording that we've generated is adding, basically breaking out some of the statements into an A and B component. We've put those on the screen for you. B would be the addition of applications received that fall outside the exclusion zone will be subject to agriculture, and we should, subject to the Agricultural Operations Practices Act. So we will add that in there. And that's giving, that's the, that means that statement that if any of the applications that are received should be assessed according to the, to the AOPA legislation. The exclusion zones are still listed in A, so those remain as areas where we are saying this development should not occur. Regardless of AOPA, if it would be allowed under AOPA, we're saying as municipality, it will not occur in these buffer areas. The other small change that I'll draw council's attention to as we're going through this, under A3, we did have a statement where a portion of the quarter falls within the mile exclusion zone, about squaring off the quarter sections. We've actually replicated that statement in the second point as well. So under the existing wording in the document, where it just says a 1.6 mile exclusion zone, or 1.6 kilometer, one mile, that could be interpreted as not having squared off the quarter sections, even though the maps show those quarter sections as squared off. So for clarity and alignment, we've just suggested we add that statement in as well.
Okay, thank you for that. So the conversation we're having before we took the break was around how the AOPA rules might apply, and how our exclusion zone works in regards to that. So is there any further comment from council regarding the clarification that's been made by administration around the use of the AOPA rules? And I guess I will defer to you, Counselor Phobes, because it was specifically a concern you raised. And so I'm, I guess the question I'm asking is, does this address the concern that you had with regard to the application of AOPA rules?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Cunningham, you had a question?
Well, just clarification, because it's, it gets a little cloudy after all this.
Oh, it does.
So just, just so I'm clear and the folks at home are aware, so what we currently have in our existing MDP is no newer or expanding CFOs within 1.6 kilometers or mile of an urban fringe or the IDP boundary. So that's current, okay? So the change that would be made in accordance with the same topic would be, it would be no new or expanding CFOs within 1.6 kilometers or one mile of an urban boundary. So we're changing that, we're taking that IDP portion out of it. So there would be, there would be a reduction in that, well, I guess depending on how you look at it, whether it's IDP or fringe. But so there is, there is a change to that portion, just so everyone's clear, where it's now going to become that boundary of that urban as opposed to the IDP.
Correct. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Whitstock?
Yes, and prior to the IDPs being developed, we were always at that 1.6 kilometers or one mile from the corporate boundaries. Once the IDPs came into play, that is when it changed. So all we're doing is taking it back to the original, original rules that we had in place prior to IDPs being developed.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Penner?
But it did not say hamlets, correct? I just don't have it in front of me. We have added hamlets.
We had urban boundaries, and so we did consider hamlets in that as well. Yeah.
Okay. Any further question, comment, clarification, discussion? Now that we've kind of pounded that one out, is there any other areas within this document that we would like to question or address prior to any further movement forward? Counselor Phobes, please.
Page 62 of our package, the tax incentives may be considered where cost sharing has been requested. If developers are looking for this, could you just, for my clarity, please, do we have something that gives direction on what we do for tax incentives? Because I've not, I have that previously, curious.
Okay, so you're referring to Policy 15, where it says tax incentives may be considered where cost sharing? Counselor Phobes, just for clarification, you're referring to that policy statement 15. Okay, all right. And that's under economic development, I believe? Yeah. Mr. Hogan, go ahead.
Through the chair, the, the draft document in front of you is contemplating that tax incentives may be an option considered by the county. To date, the county hasn't actually developed a tax incentive program or plan. So as part of the ECDEV work that's going to be done over the next couple of years, that is coming to you, but it's not in place today.
Okay, thank you.
At least not as a, any formal type of program.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any further discussion or questions related to the document that's now in front of us? Go ahead, Counselor Phobes, please.
Sorry, when I read, because I, I actually love how it is done. I just want you to know, the document was really good. I didn't even read the red letter one that we did. I just read the updated version we're going to put out. So I thought it was really well. But when I got to the alternative energy and I was looking through it, the AUC always speaks to public interest. Would it be something that council would consider putting what we believe that public interest is into our document? I know that's, and I thought about it last night when I was reading this. I would have brought it to you.
Okay, so a question has been raised, if we wanted to define what we, as Nihil County, consider to be public interest, and include that in this document. Any thoughts from council in general? And I guess I'm going to come back to you, Counselor Phobes, because this is your thought process, and you've obviously given it more thought than any of the rest of us sitting here. Even if it was just last night, that's fine. So just wondering what your thought process was and what you might have had in mind.
So when I was sitting here thinking about it, because I, I look at how the AUC trumps us all the time as municipality, and we really don't have a lot to say. But they cite public interest to us constantly about the reason why we should have the developments that we have.
Yeah.
So in my thought process yesterday and last night when I was reading this, I'm, this is just my, no one else's. In our commitment to public interest, we prioritize the needs of our residents by ensuring that energy solutions are dependable and beneficial to the community. We carefully consider the reliability and sustainability of all energy sources as well as the impact on farmland. Now, it doesn't have to be my words, because I don't know how to properly write.
Yeah. I know, like, AUC generally determines public interest by tax revenue.
Right.
That's their one and only determination. So if you can prove that you can provide a reasonable level of taxation, and actually maybe enunciate what you think that might be, that's enough to satisfy their public interest.
I know.
And in spite of many other And in spite of many other conflicting concerns, often tax revenue trumps everything, which is unfortunate. So I guess I would be looking for some guidance from Administration. Do you feel there would be advantage for us to define public interest within this document as it relates to renewable or alternate energy? Or?
Does it have to be with just that? Could we make it possibly part of our opening pages? It might be its own section, but that all, all items are considered in the best interest? I mean, that's the point of this document. So can we articulate this as a preface of this document, whether it's in the interpretation or whether it's in just a separate piece up before the overview? But to me, that statement is about every single thing.
Exactly.
And why should that particular development be any different, right? That's why we did all this.
So perhaps a public interest portion in the overview?
Yes. Yep.
That's an all encompassing statement? Again, that's going to probably take.
No, I think it's a fantastic.
Do you have any more of these?
Because it always will make, sorry.
Well, so here's what, here's why I'm asking. The reason I'm asking is I'm thinking that maybe what we should do is consider tabling this later in our meeting and allow Administration to look at what, so if there's something else that perhaps you're thinking that we needed to add or consider adding, if we're going to take that time to consider those things, perhaps we need to do all of them, right? And so the public interest one that you raised, I think is, is worth consideration how we address that. Maybe we'll leave that a bit to Administration.
Thank you.
And, but again, if I'm, if I'm going to suggest we table this and then we come back and then there's another one, I'd like to deal with all of them.
Oh yeah, no, that was my last one.
Okay, all right. Is there any other within Council concern like that? And Mr. Hogan, I'll ask you the question, would it be appropriate that we, at this point, table to allow some consideration of that and then come back to this a little bit later in our meeting?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I think, I think that would be appropriate. I, we're sitting here right now, I think what would be beneficial is for Administration to understand what the, what the aim or what the goal of that statement was. And the tabling might actually be more appropriate to the next meeting rather than later in this meeting.
Okay.
As we're looking at some of that wording, that's, I think my initial thoughts on it are that there's a lot of nuance there. And one of the things that I think would be beneficial to make sure of is that we're not putting in a statement that hurts development opportunities in general in the county. So when you talk about defining public interest, one of the, one of the dangers of providing an exact definition is that if it gets met, you're sort of bound to it now. So you might, there might be some unintended consequences of wording like that, and it really comes down to what that wording might be or what that would, what that would say. And I think administratively, we'd be comfortable if we had more time to make that assessment.
Okay, so I guess the first question I would have for Council would be, is that direction that we would want to give to Administration that we consider adding that? Again, I believe that it's probably appropriate if we're going to make that change to this document and request that Administration look at that, that we give them direction. So what I'm saying is we would need a motion to direct Administration to look at a statement on public interest and its inclusion into this document. And then that would require basically a majority of Council to push that forward. So I'm open to conversation and discussion. Deputy Reeve McGee?
So devil's advocate to that question then would be, is that not everything we do in the interest of public interest? And how defining it restricts us in not just this document, but in many other aspects as well? So it's just an overarching presumption and trying to define it for other agencies might be more cumbersome than we want to set ourselves up for. Just a question, a thought.
Well, I think, I think based on Mr. Hogan's comment, that's definitely a concern that Administration is stating right now, that we might be putting ourselves in a place where we've defined public interest in a way that might be a negative for us rather than a positive. Correct interpretation of your comment, Mr. Hogan?
Through you, Mr. Reeve, it is.
Okay. So while we're discussing this, is there any further question or comment around perhaps the inclusion of a statement on public interest? Counselor Whitstock?
I think we could probably put pretty much anything we want in there as far as public interest goes, but AUC, AR, their public interest probably will supersede our public interest because they're not only looking at us, they're looking at everyone in the province. And they have the hammer. So I'm not going to look for, for any kind of a statement in our municipal development plan saying anything about public, public interest more than what we've already have in here. So I will not be looking to delay this by putting in some sort of statement that will ultimately could be, probably would be superseded by provincial bodies.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other discussion, question, or comments related to the possible inclusion of a public interest statement? And I recognize we don't have a motion, so I don't necessarily want to prolong a debate around something that we don't actually have a motion for, so. Counselor Christie?
I guess my comment would be the whole document is in public interest for me. The more we get, try and define it, the more challengeable it becomes. So for me, this is getting to the edge of where we have jurisdiction. If we get any more, we're going to lose credibility at the end of it.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, I'm going to indulge you briefly a little bit longer. I don't have any motion saying that we would want to do this, and so any other comment related to the possible inclusion? If I'm not seeing that and there is no motion forthcoming, I would, going to say that we're probably going to move forward with the document as it sits currently. And the discussion would be with the one amendment that we've made already under Section 12 in agriculture related to a reference around the Agricultural Practices Act. So again, I'm going to take us back to the discussion on the document as the whole related to any other questions, comment, or concerns in other areas within the municipal development plan as it's been amended under Section 12 Agriculture. I'm not seeing any, so I would be at the point then where I'm going to be asking Council in terms of direction. What's being suggested is that we move third reading and now it would be to by law 1905 as amended. And so I guess I'm looking for direction from Council. What's your wish? Deputy Reeve McGee?
First, I'd like to say, just to highlight, we're at third reading and wow, the time and investment that everyone from committee members to the public, to our staff and our Council has put into this is remarkable. And I think this is an example of elevated service that we've done because we have made many steps so that everyone felt part of this process as much as we could. We thought it through, maybe overthought it through at times, but we really wanted to do a great job. So the service level to this document is extreme. And I want to just thank everyone who was part of making that happen. I think it's a strong, great document and therefore I would like to move third reading to by law 1905 as amended in the MDP number 12 of, oh, I missed the section, I forgot to write it down.
So you just would need to make a motion.
As amended.
To, yep.
That's good.
By law 1905 municipal development plan as amended.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, all right. Mr. Hogan, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just one other thing I'll bring to Council's attention, which you can decide if that, if that's included in your motion to amend. One thing we've caught under the table of contents, we still have listed in that renewables. So we change the table of contents to be alternative energy to match the section.
That is agreeable to me.
Just consistency within the document, okay? Okay, so the two changes that we are amending would be the table of contents where renewables is now alternative energy and Section 12 in the agricultural portion, Policy 12, where we now are recognizing the AOPA rules outside of our exclusion zones. Any further discussion, question, or comment? We have a motion to move third reading of by law 1905, the municipal development plan as amended, and I want to give opportunity for everyone to be ready for the question. So is there any further discussion or question, comment related to the motion on the floor? Okay, I'm not seeing any. That means in my mind that we're ready for the question. So Council moved third reading of by law 1905, the municipal development plan is amended, moved by Deputy Reeve McGee. Question is, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Excuse me, motion is carried. It's 9:40, I'm going to suggest we take a recess. We'll take a 10-minute recess, we'll be back at 10:00 a.m. But before we go, Ms. Hazelton, thank you, to you and your group, and administratively, thank you to everyone who's put in the effort, and certainly thank you to our residents and the people who helped out, made comment, gave us direction. So it's been a long process, as Deputy Reeve mentioned, and it's very greatly appreciated. So thank you. We're in recess. We're in recess. Okay, thank you for that. Are there any questions from council, any comment or discussion? Um, with regard to providing a letter of support regarding this transit pilot project? Okay, Council Penner, please.
Just, just a comment. I'm fully in favor of this, no problem. I ju- I just wanted to make sure that we're very clear to travel drum heller, anything like, whenever they use our photographs, that it does say Neale County, found within Neale County or some kind of wording where it, um, because there's been multiple photos. Mostly of the same area, but it has no reference to Neale County, period. And so I think it's, for, for me, it's very important that Neale County is, is specified. Please.
Mr. Gannon, go ahead, please.
Uh, thank you through the chair. Uh, we'll definitely have that conversation. Uh, we continue to have that conversation with our partners to understand that uh, what resides in the in Ca- Neale County is quite important to uh, our residents and our repairs. Um, we need to ensure that we are equally respected in any type of publication. Um, they are doing their best to try to address those things and we're working within those committees to ensure the forefront of those changes uh, that we, we see them. Uh, unfortunately, we do get them every now and then where Horseshoe Canyon is recognized as its own separate identity. Um, and we can continue to work with those partners to uh, understand the importance of Neale County attached to the Horseshoe Canyon brand.
Okay, thank you.
And the reason I bring it up is it came to our attention, um, the six most neighborly towns in Alberta to visit and um, Drumheller was one of them and Horseshoe Canyon was on there and it's just located a short few kilometers from the town of Drumheller, but it did not say in Neale County. You know, so yeah, and thank you for what you had just said there, so appreciate it.
Mr. Gannon, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. I just want to add one additional thing is that uh, the sign which council asked us to make an amendment to, we did put the branding sign there that clearly established Neale County Horseshoe Canyon. So I'm hoping that future photographs that come from that area incorporate that sign into that aspect to really capture both the branding for Horseshoe Canyon as well as Neale County. So we are trying to be strategic in the placement of this signage as well to capture Neale County as the entity.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, Council Penner, please.
And the reason I bring it up is it came to our attention, um, the six most neighborly towns in Alberta to visit and um, Drumheller was one of them and Horseshoe Canyon was on there and it's just located a short few kilometers from the town of Drumheller, but it did not say in Neale County. You know, so yeah, and thank you for what you had just said there, so appreciate it.
Mr. Gannon, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. I just want to add one additional thing is that uh, the sign which council asked us to make an amendment to, we did put the branding sign there that clearly established Neale County Horseshoe Canyon. So I'm hoping that future photographs that come from that area incorporate that sign into that aspect to really capture both the branding for Horseshoe Canyon as well as Neale County. So we are trying to be strategic in the placement of this signage as well to capture Neale County as the entity.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, Deputy Reeve McGee.
I just want to bring clarity too for people to remember that travel drum heller means travel drum heller in region. And um, it, it is not a program of the actual municipality. So we're talking about a separate group, not the municipality of the of Drumheller. Um, just so there's clarity there. And also I wanted to bring emphasis to the fact that our um, Horseshoe Canyon master plan does make reference to researching this as a possibility in the future. I think when I read that, I thought it meant like, you know, many years from now. So to see that come forward in another way is really quite exciting to see. Therefore, I'd like to make the motion that council provide a letter of support. Sorry, we just lost my uh, my screen. Letter of support to trial drum heller to support the expression of interest for exploring transit options in rural Alberta and Drumheller case study. Uh, I know it's taken for granted, but I want clarity that you, that we as staff do get the outcomes of that in a timely fashion to be part of those conversations. I know we have staff participating, but I just want to be sure that that is one of the expectations I have with this uh, motion.
Okay, so um, we do have a motion from Deputy Reeve McGee that council provides a letter of support to travel drum heller to support their expression of interest for the exploring transit options in rural Alberta. Drumheller case study. So that's the motion and um, if you want to just provide a little more clarity, if you would please, Deputy Reeve McGee on your expectation.
I just want to be certain that uh, travel drum heller is aware that we are saying yes because we want to be part, be at the table and be part of, of hearing this report and of discussions of anything that comes from that. That would.
Okay, thank you for that clarity and Council Phobes, please.
I'm also in agreeance with you, um, Deputy Reeve. Because I'm looking at it from the perspective of Drumheller Horseshoe Canyon always seems to want to be in that area and not really part of who we are. So I want to make sure that it's very clear that if you're asking for our support, what exactly are you going to be doing? For the residents and the businesses of Neale County that's going to get transit so that people could go to these your facility, my facility, our facility, whatever that looks like.
Okay, I think that I've seen some nods, so I think administration kind of understands what we're looking to have back. Uh, any further discussion, question or comment to the motion that we provide a letter of support to travel drum heller? Um, to support their expression of interest for the exploring transit options in rural Alberta? Drumheller case study. And the addition to that, excuse me, to that motion would be and that Neale County receive a finalized copy of the report. Okay, so that's the motion that we'll be um voting on here shortly. Is there any further question, comment, discussion? Are we um, happy with where we've ended up? If so, are we prepared to respond to the question? Okay, I see a bunch of nods, so I'm going to ask the question. The motion is that council provide a letter of support to travel drum heller to support their expression of interest for the exploring transit options in rural Alberta? Drumheller case study and that Neale County receive a finalized copy of the report. Okay, all those in favor? And that motion is carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Ms. Gabrantz and Mr. Hogan and Mr. Gannon. Appreciate your assistance. The next item in our agenda is uh, seven point one under Legislative Services. Youth event sponsorship, Neale Minor Hockey. And Ms. Vander Cool, I believe this is you.
Oh, what did I, shush, I shut something off here. I'll fix that later. You guys could, oh, see it on the screen.
It's all this, all this technology, trying to keep it all operating.
Oh my goodness. Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve and council. I bring you today a youth event sponsorship request. The request is made, um, is from the Neale Minor Hockey Association. They are hosting the U fifteen B provincial playoffs, March twentieth to twenty-third. There'll be around six hundred participants at this event. The purpose of the youth event sponsorship program is to provide financial assistance to organizations operating within the boundaries of Neale County for the purpose of organizing and conducting youth oriented events, activities and programs. The application meets eligibility as Neale Minor Hockey operates within Neale County and parti- and the participants are youth. Attached you will find the application and the policy for your review. Neale Minor Hockey is requesting one thousand dollars in funding and we currently have um, eight thousand eight hundred dollars remaining in the existing funding pool. Today, council has the option to approve the request, one thousand dollars of funding to Neale Minor Hockey, or you may choose and choose to allocate a different amount. And the third choice is to request further information or explore other options.
Okay, thank you for that. Questions or discussion? The request is for a thousand dollars. To help sponsor the U fifteen provincial tournament, hockey tournament. And you have all the details on their budget and what their expectations are. So is there any discussion, question or comment? Barring that, is there any motion? Council Phobes.
I would make the motion that council approve the funding of a thousand dollars to Neale Minor Hockey to support hosting the U fifteen hockey provincials from March twentieth to the twenty-third of twenty twenty-five. Any further question, comment or discussion?
Not seeing any, so that must mean we're ready for the question. So I'll ask, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. And thank you, Ms. Vander Cool. All right, the next item on our agenda is uh, council committee reports. The first item in that list is um, nine point one, Neale Housing. And Council Phobes.
Thank you. Um, so we received some questions um, from council on regards to um, the budget that we do. The board approves the budget for the following year, but until our audit comes in to make sure that we've covered everything that we need to um, provincial wise due to our legislation, which will be coming at the end of March and will be presented to our board in April. So at this time, I will not be able to answer a ton of your questions, um, Mr. King or Reeve, sorry.
That's all right.
Just because, one, my girl who does the finances for this has been on holidays and does not get back until tomorrow. Um, two, the organization has created a committee of, for the finance, so they have to meet to address those que- I have emailed them. I've also included in the email that after we do our audit, that our um, CIO of housing and the finance, she's also the lodge manager, comes and presents to council for, as a delegation to answer all of your questions.
Okay.
So we do have a motion that we approve funding of $1,000 to Neale Minor Hockey to support hosting the U-15 Hockey Provincial from March 20th to 23rd, 2025. Any further question, comment or discussion? Not seeing any, so that must mean we're ready for the question. So I'll ask. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. And thank you, Ms. Vanderkuul. All right. The next item on our agenda is Council and Committee Reports. The first item in that list is 9.1, Neale Housing. And Councilor Phobes.
Thank you. So we received some questions from council on regards to the budget that we do. The board approves the budget for the following year, but until our audit comes in to make sure that we've covered everything that we need to, provincial-wise, due to our legislation, which will be coming at the end of March and will be presented to our board in April. So at this time, I will not be able to answer a ton of your questions, Mr. King or Reeve, sorry.
That's all right.
Just because, one, my girl who does the finances for this has been on holidays and does not get back until tomorrow. Two, the organization has created a committee for the finance, so they have to meet to address those. I have emailed them. I've also included in the email that after we do our audit, that our CIO of Housing and the Finance, she's also the lodge manager, comes and presents to council for, as a delegation, to answer all of your questions around the table. I do have one question though.
Yeah.
Because when we go and we sit on the boards, we get an outline of what we're supposed to do. So from this perspective of what is council looking for every time we present? Because I haven't been able to find anything that gives me direction on what council's looking for in the presentation of our reports.
For me, it's only if ever there was a big change in the per diems, whatever, you know, that kind of thing. Otherwise, it's nice to see the stuff. But yeah, no, and if there's, we have questions, it's, you know, we just fall back on yourselves or any of us, depending on which. But yeah, no, there's no. You do a good job.
And I guess like from my point of view is, is, you know, I actually read your minutes and see what you're discussing. And then I actually read the next month's minutes and I go back and go, hmm, there was something discussed in the previous minutes that didn't show up in the next minutes. And so often I'm just looking for clarity.
Yeah.
And one of the things that I recognize very much is that what happens at Neale Housing as a requisitioning body doesn't necessarily impact taxes, but it does impact the bills that we send to our residents. And so I recognize that the Neale Housing Board is operating in a way that they see best for managing Golden Hills Lodge and the money that they're administering for the province. But I also see partly my role as, as a counselor for Neale County to just be sure that what's happening with the organization is just like, say with FCSS, when we send out our requisitions. So the questions I'm asking are mostly for clarity, just to understand. And one of the things I saw in your 2025 budget was the deficit. And so to me, that's concerning. And I'm just wondering in terms of long-term. And there was a conversation around a five-year plan and I think, oh, that's going to be the long-term. And then there was nothing beyond that. So that's why I'm asking. And so, and I would hope that any reports that I'm bringing forward or financial stuff that's showing up from FCSS or whatever, if there's questions on that, I hope that they're being asked by this council. Because again, FCSS requisition actually turns up in our actual taxes and can get lost in the big picture, right?
And so, when, sorry, Laura Lee, Councilor Cunningham, when we look at our requisition funding, because that was voted on by the county as a whole back in the day, that we would take on that responsibility as ratepayers for our residents. When residents come to who we are at Golden Hills, I can't choose a Neale by legislation. I can't just choose Neale residents.
Oh, no, absolutely.
I have to be able to choose if the room is available and the list doesn't have a Neale previous resident on it, I still have to choose to fill that space. And I think sometimes that that might be lost when the public sees requisition coming because they're wondering, there's not a lot of residents in there that grew up here, did things in this county. But we're bound to new legislation now due to the current conditions of the economy that we're currently in.
Yep.
So we have moved forward in the best way that we can to be able to do that. Now, I understand that when people look at the housing, for many years, it wasn't increased. And so the unfortunate part is, is when we, I gotta be careful how I word this. The unfortunate part is, is when we looked at the organization as a whole, there were some deficiencies that we needed to fix.
Yeah.
And in order, that list was lengthy. And we're still, there's still some things coming. I can show you the list. I can't put it out for public consumption because of the contentiousness of what's on that list.
So I guess my assumption is, is that the board is actually doing their best efforts to make sure that Neale Housing and the concerns within it are being addressed. When, when I get a budget from Neale County, we have a constant relationship between this is what we budgeted, this is what we spent. And so my question related around previous year's budgets and spending is, it's curiosity somewhat.
Yeah, of course.
But in terms of, was there a deficit in operations? And then those deficits, how do they affect your either reserves or funding going forward? And so then when I saw the 2025 budget with a deficit already built into it, my question then becomes, how is that funded? Is it reserves? And if so, are you depleting those? And how is that going to affect potentially requisition going forward into the future? And so I'm not necessarily trying to make anybody's life miserable. I'm just curious about what the future might look like for all of us in recognition of the fact that a big part of that requisition, and it's all been laid out in how it's determined, but a big part of that requisition requisition is still Neale County, 77 some percent of it. And so just in terms of being accountable to our own ratepayers, we need to be cognizant of what potentially might be coming in the future. And so that's, that's my curiosity. And I know this, you guys have done a ton of work, you and Councilor Cunningham, so Councilor Phobes and Councilor Cunningham have done a lot of work along with the other municipal representatives that sit on that board to move that organization forward. So that's, that's the basis behind my question. I think that what you're reporting is adequate. But when, like I say, when I read minutes and stuff and I look and I go, oh, I didn't see anything, then I, that prompts questions, okay? Councilor Cunningham, go ahead.
So thank you for your questions, Reeve. We do appreciate it and certainly welcome them. So I sit on the Finance Committee from Neale Housing, and so we do have a meeting booked for next week, so we will definitely address some of your questions. The reserve plan was never created prior to Councilor Phobes and I being on the board, so that's something that we're having to invent from the start, right? So that's been some work. So the strat planning, I know our CEO just recently attended some strategic planning course, actually. And actually, as board chair, Councilor Phobes, last couple of weeks has sent out what our three top goals for Neale Housing going forward is. So I think we've maybe, except for one, we finally had that trickle in. So, so that's all definitely in the, in the process for sure. So just in terms of your questions about actuals, I know this comes into play at the county as well. So are you looking for actuals or are you looking for the variance reports, which is what Neale County provides? Just looking for some clarity on that.
So I'm looking for budget versus, so if you want to give me a variance report, that's fine, but you don't have to. If you can say in 2023, we had, and then I looked at your budget, there's five or six income categories. There's five or six expense categories. If this was our budget and this was what we actually did, and just the difference at the bottom line, that's all I really care about. And the reason I'm asking again, as I clarified, is if you are operating at a surplus, great. If you're operating at a deficit, the question becomes, how long-term are we going to finance that? And I think Neale County has a vested interest in that because of the portion of requisition. So is that going to impact requisition? I know you're mandated somewhat on how much you can charge for accommodation, and that really impacts your ability to have income. So requisition is a big part of that. So that's, that's what's driving my question.
Yep.
And so I just was, if I get 23 and 24 and then see the 25 budget, at least we have some idea of a trend.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that because I know we've had that discussion at the county as well. There is a difference between variance reports and actuals. So I just wanted to be really clear about what it was you're looking for. So I can tell you for this year, the deficit will come out of reserves for sure. And yeah, so we'll, once the, I know Councilor Phobes will be away at the next meeting, but that's when the auditor will be there and the Finance Committee will admit by then. So we'll definitely get that information to you next month. Yeah.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I hope that understands a little bit more, helps you understand why, where I'm going on those.
Yeah, no, for sure.
Okay. Now, Councilor Penner.
Just a comment. I love curiosity because it's a learning tool for all of us, to be honest with you. And we all think of different things. So anytime, curiosity, I think is awesome.
Okay, any other questions related to that, other than that? Mr. Hogan, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not a question, but just a comment in nature of the conversation. So in 2024, the requisition from Neale Housing was just over 304,000. This year, it was 311, just over 311,000. So it's been about a $7,500 increase year to year, so not unreasonable.
No, no, it's just under 3%. Just, squeaked under 3%. Go ahead, Councilor Phobes.
Because our, the organization, I want to point fingers.
Careful, yeah.
Yeah, because the organization was running so lean before, when we actually sat down as a board and said, what are we actually doing? That increase, don't get me wrong, as a board, that scared all of us when we actually saw what we should have been doing and that those charges could have been done incrementally. They weren't and it's okay.
Yeah.
We're refined ourselves. So the unfortunate part is, is we got that huge jump. And now it's like Mr. Hogan says, we are, it's, it's not unreasonable now. Whereas before, even when I first sat there, because my dad used to do this for a living as well, I literally said, how are we even running this organization on that little bit of funding?
Yeah.
It was, it was too lean and so lean that we weren't, we have reserves, but there should have, we're working towards increasing those. For, because the building is old and it's aging, so we have a lot of things that are coming up against who we are.
Well, and that's one of the reasons when I looked at what you were discussing in your minutes around the five-year plan and some objectives and goals. Maybe one of the five-year plans, I don't know what it'll be, but maybe it's about building a reserve to do maintenance. And I look at what you have in maintenance this year and go, okay, you know, like that's, it's a significant number, but it could be a much bigger number than that. And so how do you pay for that and how do you plan to pay for that? So I know you guys are doing your job. I'm not questioning that.
Yeah.
But I am a curious character, so I'm sorry.
Never be sorry. I am equally curious about things.
Okay, all right. Okay, if there's nothing else on Neale Housing, we'll go quickly to 9.2, which is Community Futures. And Councilor Christie.
Community Futures, I just want to emphasize the heart of the community. Quarter two is first of April. We're looking for nominations for the east side of the county. In conversation, our meeting isn't till next week because it usually would have been last week, but I don't have a final number on quarter number one, but I believe it's something over 60 businesses were nominated. So my goal is to beat it, so nominate somebody. That's my, that's my main message, so. It's, basically highlights our, our community businesses that we don't recognize. So it gives them some visibility in advertising, so. And there's an award for that, for each quarter of $1,000, so. So for the premier business, so I'm not sure what it was last, last quarter, but I guess we're not to the end of that quarter yet.
You'll find out at your next meeting.
Well, you know, maybe, maybe. But the nominations are open for quarter number two is my main message, so.
Okay. Appreciate that. Any questions for Councilor Christie? All right, not seeing any, so 9.3 would be Police Advisory and 9.4, Women in Business, Mountain View Event. And Councilor Cunningham, if you would, please.
So for Police Advisory, we met last week and it was a very light agenda due to the fact that, like we saw with Neale County, that the members had come and done their presentation. So we kind of just reviewed that, so pretty light. But we did clarify, I know there was some talk that due to provincial changes, that perhaps Police Advisory Committees would be abolished. Because of the population threshold that we're at, we are fine. So ours will continue to operate as it has been, so just to clarify.
Well, that's good news.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah. You betcha. And so Mountain View and Neighbors Women in Business Awards, which was on Friday, absolutely amazing event. It was sold out, so there was 250 attendees in Oles at the Palmer Inn. We had Emily Cooper in attendance. She actually sat at our table, which was lovely. Unfortunately, Emily, Jason Nixon and Emily Rebecca Schultz were both to attend, but due to some recent events, there was an emergency caucus meeting called Friday morning. So unfortunately, they weren't able to attend. And of course, Emily Cooper does not have to attend those, so he was able to come. We did have MP Earl Dreschen there and he did bring greetings. And it was really lovely because he's in his final time as MP, so there was a little bit of motion there. And so, yeah, it was really nice to have him there. Wendy Gabrant, our Economic Development Manager, was able to come and brought a really great basket that was given away with lots of Neale County and area products, which was awesome. One thing that I, I feel like, I said that day, I felt a little bit like a proud mother and then I thought I probably at my age, I'm more of a proud grandmother, but let's be real. So Anna Dow, who I have to say is a born and raised Neale County Division Five young lady, she received one of our scholarships two years ago. And she is now the President of the Olds College Student Association. So very proud of her for that. And she did speak, and I have to say, amazing young lady. The speech she did was about mentorship and to look for mentors in your life, I think no matter what age you're at. And so she just totally knocked it out of the park. Ree Evangel Albert from Mountain View County, her and I argued a little bit over who, if she was mine or hers, so we came to a compromise that we could share, Ms. Dow. So yeah, just kudos to her. It's just, yeah, so exciting to see a homegrown Neale County student just flourish. So yeah, it was pretty awesome, so. Councilor Phobes somehow got roped into doing photography for the event, so really want to thank her for that. I think I previously mentioned, we have 12, we had 12 nominees from Neale County and area, which was over double what we had last year. And so what they did was, everybody that was nominated was called up and then the three top folks were, were called to the stage. So that was all outside judging. People like Diane Finstead and different community members, people like that. So the committee itself, we did not have a part in the judging. So Jose Kirk with Kirk's Alpaca Farm had second place for Women in Agriculture. Amanda Gill, who is our Neale Housing CEO, she had third place in Women in Business Nonprofit. And Jeanette Austin with Exelo and Kirk's Heating, she was third place for Women of Influence. So yeah, so it was just, yeah, a really great event, one of those days you just celebrate. And then hopefully, everybody gets to go home, put their feet up. So yeah, it was just awesome. So thanks to everybody for their contributions. And yeah, if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you for that. Councilor Cunningham, are there any questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So the last one on the list is 9.5, Toshu Housing. And I just thought I would let you know that they are pouring cement and they are moving forward on the foundation side of the building. They're still moving forward. And they're looking quite forward to our completion of our borrowing by law and finally settling things with ATB. But they, you just need to know the project's moving and moving forward. And we still hadn't received the final Phase Two tender as of the last meeting. It's anticipated to come in well within what they were projecting, so they're very hopeful for that. And I mentioned to you that we had hired a fundraising guru who many of you know formerly from the Victim Services, Carolyn. And the goal is to raise $2 million towards equipment and furniture. And so they are starting fundraising projects. And if you're interested in golf, they have a golf tournament on June 12th, and that's one of their fundraising events. So I'm sure you're going to see stuff out in the public around that event on June 12th. Beyond that, it's just business as usual. And the project is moving forward, so. There any questions? I'd be happy to let Councilor Christie answer them.
Passing the buck again. But one of the comments from the builder the other day is, there's a huge pile of clay. I believe they will give that away, but they will sell the topsoil. But the clay that they will, they need to move some of it away. So it's there if we can find somebody that needs clay.
Well, I guess you just call the town at Toshu and talk to them.
We gave them blocks, now I want them.
All right. Enough of that. Okay, so at this point, what I would entertain, if there's no further. Okay, so at this point, what I would entertain, if there's no further questions, is a motion to accept the council and committee reports as presented. Council Cunningham, please.
I'll move that council accepts for information the council and committee reports as presented.
Thank you very much. The next item in our agenda is the couns- Oh, right, I'm sorry. We have a motion, thank you, Council Cunningham, to accept for information. And thank you, Council Whitstock, for the reminder that I'm falling down in my duties. Um, all those in favor? That's carried unanimously. See, this is a team we're on here. Appreciate that. Alright, the next item on our agenda, now that we voted on the previous one, is council follow-up action list. And that is also out there for our perusal, are there any questions related to the council follow-up action list? Any questions? Council Cunningham, please.
Um, say no, because I know we do this to administration all the time, I know it's not on the list, but, um, just curious if you're able to share, um, through the chair to Mr. Hogan, what the status is of the hiring for the CEO in Carbon? If the applications are still being accepted, or where we're at with that.
Mr. Hogan, go ahead.
Through the chair, um, we've conducted, uh, some interviews, the process is still technically open. Um, but we have started the interview process with some applicants, and I think in terms of public information, it's probably best to, to cap there.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions? And I'm just kind of looking for it on the list here. But we had directed, um, administration request a meeting with, um, Minister Dreschen regarding, um, a bridge and a road. We got a letter back that said, thanks for your interest, but there's no time. Uh, one of the things they said in that was, we should perhaps, uh, request a meeting with the local transportation supervisor for our area. And I had a conversation with Mr. Hogan around that, and his suggestion was that we as council give direction to administration to request that and put those on that, rather than, we tried to meet in the fall, and we tried to meet in the spring. I think those issues are important enough that we could make a motion to direct administration to proceed further beyond Minister Dreschen and bring those issues to provincial transportation people. So, that would be one of the things I would be looking for, a motion from council coming out of, um, council and committee reports. Is that we direct administration to do that. Are there any other questions or comments related to the follow-up action list? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So, what I would be looking for, I guess, would be a motion that we, um, ask administration to relate those, um, road issues that we were going to raise with the, with the minister. And have those discussed. Council Whitstock.
Just a quick question, are we looking to have him come, they come as a delegation? To sit before us in council, or is this going to be a private? I guess it'll depend on what administration can come up with.
Well, I guess, um, in my conversation with Mr. Hogan, uh, my concern was, is that I think those issues are pertinent enough that we want action on them. Like I look at what's happening, and we didn't have this on our list, but I look at what's happening on twenty-seven North between twenty-one and, and it's absolutely horrible. I know what's happening on twenty-one at the bridge there, and on eight-thirty-six, I believe that was the highway we mentioned. I think the issues are severe enough and of interest enough that, rather than waiting till we can present them to Minister Dreschen, if the option is to talk to transportation supervisor in this area, I feel that we can just ask administration to bring those issues forward on our behalf and put them in front of them for action. So I don't think we're asking for a, a meeting with council, but what we are asking for is administration to move those issues up the chain. Mr. Hogan, or Mr., Council Whitstock?
My hair's shorter.
You go ahead. Council Whitstock.
Uh, just, just, um, it's not supplemental, but years ago, uh, the AT Supervisor for the area would come and sit before council and give updates on their three-year plan, their five-year plan. Uh, but that hasn't been done for a number of years, and maybe they are no longer available to do that kind of stuff. But I'm just mentioning that, that did happen at one point in time. And it was actually great to meet the supervisor, him meet us, and we get it right from the horse's mouth on what their priorities may, what their current priorities are, and how they're going to change, or if they're not going to change. But, just the information.
Okay. So now the motion reads that council direct administration to request an engagement with the Regional Director of Alberta Transportation regarding several provincial bridge and road issues. Mr. Hogan, did you want to comment?
Uh, to you, Mr. Chair, we've just altered the, the recommended motion to request an engagement. So if that takes the place as a delegation, or it takes the place as a different meeting, um, I think what I've heard is a preference would be for some sort of update here. Um, but we'll see what they're, what they're open to. But, either that, through that way or through a different meeting, then we'll make that request.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other discussion, uh, someone willing to make that motion? Oh, Council Whitstock, sorry.
Okay, I would move the council direct administration to request an engagement with the local Regional Director with Alberta Transportation regarding several provincial bridge and road issues.
Okay, thank you, Council Whitstock. Um, so any further discussion to that? If not, I'm going to ask the question, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. And then the other motion we would be looking for would be to, um, receive the, um, council follow-up action list, acceptance of the, Council Kristi.
I'd make the motion to receive for information the council follow-up action list is presented.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, Council Kristi, all those in favor? And that is also carried unanimously, thank you. Alright, um, does anybody need a break, or are we prepared to go forward in our agenda? Yeah, okay, so I have a request for a quick break, so I'm going to say we're in recess till ten forty-five. Okay, so ten forty-five, we're in recess.
Okay, it's ten forty-six and so I'm going to call our meeting back to order. The next item on our agenda is closed session. So I would need a motion to move us into closed session. We have three items under the closed session. One being disclosure harmful to economic and other interests of a public body, section twenty-five. Disclosure harmful to business interests of a third party, section sixteen. And advice from officials, section twenty-four. Counselor Whitstock.
Thank you, Mr. Eve. I would like to move us into closed session.
Okay, so we have a motion to go into closed session. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously.
Okay, it is 12:56. We had a motion to return to open session at 12:52. We recessed to allow the return of the gallery and to return to the streaming session. We have one motion coming from closed session. And... There we go. That council authorized administration to proceed with the land investment opportunity as discussed. I need a mover for that motion. And... Councilor Christie?
I'll move to authorize the administration to proceed with the land investment opportunity as discussed.
Okay, thank you for that. All those in favor? And that motion is carried unanimously. The next item on our agenda is one that none of us ever look forward to, but it's a motion to adjourn. 12:52, we are adjourned.